Ladies and gentlemen, call to me in order if you'd rise for Mr. Russell White to lead some prayer, Mr. Van Meter, please.
No, I wouldn't bow with us. Good Lord, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for all our many blessings that you shower upon us for this great country we live in, this great state of wonderful community that we all share. The message you got us this evening through the meeting, that we do the best thing possible in the situation we have before us. We thank you for all of the fellow citizens, our neighbors that have come to join us this evening, that assets you give us all a safe ride home from the meeting, all these things.
Amen. Glad, United States of America, through the Republic of One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, Liberty and Justice For All. Ladies and gentlemen, I need to read this to you before we begin the meeting. I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommended body to the Clemmy County Board of Commissions. The decisions debate on rezoning and Varick's request tonight will be forwarded to the commissions for final action on November twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. You wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain your request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may see it this time during the hearing if they so desire. We have a, excuse me, we have a motion to approval of the minutes of previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Need approval of the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify with your right hands, please. On the new business, first item is Mr. Will Butler.
Senator Sheriff's request for a massage operator's license for Jenny Goodell. She's doing business as Revive Massage and Bodywork, located at eleven oh six Fury's Lane, Unit B, for massage at on-premise and mobile, one second, having, or excuse me, only on-premise. And she meets all requirements of the ordinance and staff recommends approval.
Have any questions concerning this issue? Need a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Jenny Goodell, provide massage therapy at eleven oh six Fury's Lane, Suite B.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Second item, Butler.
This is Connie Roundtree Massage Therapy LLC. She's doing business at eight oh seven B Oakhurst Drive, is on-premise and mobile massage services. Seems all requirements of the ordinance, staff recommends approval.
Questions? Motion to accept or deny this issue?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Connie Roundtree Massage Therapy LLC at eight zero seven B Oakhurst Drive and Mobile Massage Services.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Now we'll open the meeting for public hearings. First item on the agenda is Uche Creek Dog boarding, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation for Uche Creek Dog boarding at fifty-five ninety-four Harlem Grove Town Road. Property is located on the south side of Harlem Grove Town Road and is currently zoned RA residential agricultural. This property is under the jurisdiction of Columbia County, but as you can see with the green shading there, it is largely surrounded by properties within the city of Grove Town. So the city of Grove Town was included on review of this request due to proximity there. This shows the zoning of the property, again, currently zoned RA. And this is the existing site. You can see the existing house and the existing accessory building on the property. The request is for a dog boarding and daycare business. As a home occupation, they would be limited to no more than five dogs on the property at any one time, and that is reflected in the narrative they have submitted with this request. If they were doing this all inside the house, it would be a customary home occupation, but they are requesting to use the accessory building at the rear of the property for the kennel. They are planning to have five kind of suites in the kennel for the dogs and then a fenced play area to the side and rear of the building, which you can see on their site plan. There is some potential for this business to cause some nuisances to the neighbors as far as noise, potentially odor, and we do have some conditions proposed from the city as well as some information from the applicant to kind of help address those concerns. The building itself is concrete and is insulated. It is climate controlled. That will also help address some of the noise concerns since the insulation will also provide some sound dampening. The building's also at the back of the property, so it's quite far away from the adjacent, the houses on the adjacent properties. And the floor of that building is concrete, so it's easy to wash and keep clean. In addition, we do have several proposed conditions with this request. The first is that the dogs only be allowed outside between seven AM and ten PM, and that the noise be kept at levels consistent with the city of Grove Town's code of ordinances, that the housing and enclosures used by the dogs are kept in sanitary conditions. This is mirrored from the county code for nuisances in regards typically to keeping of livestock, but would also apply with this condition to the keeping of the dogs on this property, and that any vehicles transiting to the property, of course, park entirely on the property itself, which again should be a given, but that was requested as a condition by the city just to ensure that they do park on their own property. And staff is recommending approval with those conditions.
Before I ask the next question, anyone that addresses the commission needs to come to the microphone, please, and give your name and address for record purposes. So is anyone here who would like to come forward on behalf of this kennel and like to present it? Anyone here against this issue? Any questions from here? We have a motion to accept or deny the kennel.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions provisional home occupation for Uche Creek Dog boarding at fifty-five ninety-four Harlem Grove Town Road.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, please. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Butler.
Senator Sheriff's request for a major revision at forty-five twenty at Herford Farm Road, zero point four four acres. Currently is an S one special. Currently it's a personal care home. They're taking it back to allow for R two uses, basically simultown residential uses, also reduce setbacks. Shows location of the property, basically the intersection of Meadow Lane and also Herford Farm Road. And currently is an S one. So both these properties here are, we're rezoned for personal care homes back in two thousand one. They're both over six, six people, so that require the rezoning. The applicant has requested to buy the one that's highlighted in red. He wants to live there, does not want to have a personal care home there anymore. So normally we'd say, okay, let's, let's rezone it back to what it used to be, which is R two. The issue is that there's no sewer access on this side of Herford Farm Road, but we can't rezone it back to R two unfortunately, because R two requires you to have sewer access. We'll be hearing kind of more about that later on with another application, just wanted to kind of go ahead and preface that with this application here. Here's aerial view of the site. Again, here's the existing home. And the existing site itself, again, currently being used as a personal care home, as we can see from the sign on the property. So one of the issues with the property and the kind of why it's, we're keeping it as an S one, also talking about the setbacks themselves. If it were to be R two, this is a hundred and five foot setback, it cannot meet that. Also cannot meet the side setback on the next, on the next slide. So we are going to keep the setbacks as they currently are on the property, not going to apply the R two setbacks. There is some concern with the, the future widening of the property. There'll likely be some acquisition in this area for the widening of Herford Farm Road. The septic tank is in this area. It'll probably have to be relocated somewhere in the back of the property. But one of the things that we want to make sure, our insurer happens for, for now and in the future, if the house were to be totally lost, normally we'd say it has to be built back at setbacks and apply some sort of number to that. Because of where the, where the, where the septic tank is going, or likely going, and also due to the existing site itself, we have a condition that says we'll basically keep the existing setbacks as they are. This shows a plat, again, fairly old plat itself. In terms of future developments, this is within the in-town neighborhoods area. This is primarily for some infill development, you know, going to a little more dense development perhaps than what's already, than what's currently there. Again, no sewer access, and also we're taking it back from a personal care home into a residential use, so much, much more in keeping with what's currently there. Again, as discussed, we have a condition with the, with the request, we recommend approval with that condition itself, and again, in the event of future destruction, primary structure on the property will be allowed to be rebuilt in its present location. That includes staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to make a presentation for this issue? All right, thank you, sir. Anybody here against this issue? Ed, do we have a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file R Z twenty-three dash eleven dash zero one, major S one revision to permit residential use setbacks at five twenty-eight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning on forty-nine thirty-three Herford Farm Road on two point zero six acres. Current zoning is R one for single-family residential, and the existing use is a personal care home for six residents. The request is S one special to increase the number of residents, twelve. Here is the location on the north side of Herford Farm and next to the Allen Farm subdivision. Across the road, you've got Farmington. Zoning map shows the R one zoning for the subject property. This is an aerial of the property. So basically, it's a, it's a large home on a large lot, and the current business Lily of the Valley is a, a day, a personal care home that's been there for a couple of years. The, being a home occupation currently, it's allowed a maximum of six residents, and the owner of the business would like to add to twelve residents, and that is why this S one zoning is required. This is the photographs of the property. And the plant. This is the building layout of the, the building, showing the general layout there. The applicant has talked to the state and the farm marshals, and there is potential of adding some more beds, and we don't know exactly what the final number will be. It could be twelve, but the actual number will be based on the farm marshal, the building plans, and then what the state decides as well. So phase one of the work will be internal upgrades of the building and the fire sprinkler system, et cetera, and phase two will be widening the driveway and the parking lot at the back. So that's, that's the stages the S one is proposed to follow. And there is a widening project on, on Herford Farm Road, and this is the part that will be taken from the property. The future development map states this is in the neighborhoods area. That is for residential. It is, also allows community centers, schools, libraries, et cetera, and this being a current personal care home, the character will stay residential looking, and staff is recommending approval.
Do one, anyone that would like to come forward on behalf of this issue, please? Okay. Anybody that would like to come against this issue? Any other questions? Motion to accept or deny this issue?
Motion approved, file R Z twenty-three dash eleven zero. Zoning from R one to S one for a personal care home with up to twelve residents at thirty-three Herford Farm Road.
Second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Next one on the agenda is. Mr. Butler.
Senator Sheriff's request for a rezoning at forty-one thirty-six Day Road and off Summer Place for six point six four acres. Currently zoned R two. The request is to actually downzone it to R one, simultown residential. Talk about that here in a few moments. Shows location of the property, again, on the south side of Day Road and off Summer Place. And the current zoning, so it's currently zoned R two. Lots of large R two lots in the area, kind of south of Day Road. North of Day Road, you have lots of normal R two lots, basically quarter acre or a little bit bigger perhaps. So it is kind of a different area. We kind of saw that before, the previous requests off of our previous, our two, two requests ago on Herford Farm. So that one of the things that's kind of unique with this one as well, we have nearby sewer, but then we also have an area that doesn't have sewer access, basically south of Day Road is where there's no sewer currently. So here's the aerial view of the property, and we're dealing with these two properties here. And the existing site, intersection of Day Road and Summer Place. And this shows the current concept plan. So again, if it is rezoned down to R one, it's, the request is to have five developed lots, you can see here in the common area space. So the issue is that the, or the applicant is putting forth that the sewer that's available here, there is, it's too expensive to access it essentially. The health department can waive that requirement to connect. Again, they are within the five hundred foot area to, to connect to that, but that is what they're looking to do. Again, it shows you what could be done with the R, R one zoning. And again, so this is the sewer location here, and the sewer, the closest sewer manhole is at this location over on Fair Oaks Road. So again, if it is zoned, if it stays zoned as R two, it could actually be developed at a much denser, or much more dense development than what is currently proposed there. Probably looking at more like twelve units. So one of the concerns from water utility actually has to do with this blue line stream you can kind of faintly see there. That is one of the, basically the, the fingers of Reed Creek, that feeds in the Reed Creek, which then of course goes to the river. So the problem is, is that the, that this, this portion of the creek is on the three oh three D list from the E P D, the Environmental Protection Division. Basically, it has too much fecal matter in it. That'd be really, really another way to put it. So the issue is that if, if, if this is allowed to be developed with septic tanks, those could leach into that stream, further impair the stream itself, and potentially have, you know, other effects on other parts of the county that it touches. So due to that, water utility has said that they must connect to sewer. It essentially leads us down the path of saying, well, no sense in rezoning it to R two, or no sense in rezoning it to R one, excuse me. Let's keep it R, R one, and I recommend this approval. In terms of future development map, this is the neighborhoods area, again, supposed to be residential in nature. Either R one or R two works. So either way it goes, it, it fits within the future development map. Again, at the end of all of that, staff recommends, recommends disapproval of the request to rezone from R two to R one. Staff recommendation.
Who is here that would like to come to the microphone on behalf of representing the developer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. My name's Ron Lewis. My address is three oh five six Leaning Oakway, Martiness, Georgia. I, I just want to say that I initially approached the zoning department, got some indication I could, I could downzone. A few days later, it was, I was notified that there was a restriction. The property was in two hundred feet of the sewer line. I wasn't given any other, you know, information at the time. Initially, we looked at and, and developed an R two plan, twelve lots, I believe twelve lots, and went through an initial cost estimation, not economically feasible. My initial approach had been all along to develop large lots. I'm a builder. I build upper end residential, single-family homes in the county. I just thought that the location was good. It's got residential around it. It was a downsized about one point one acres per lot. So I, we went to the pre-development meeting. There was some indication afterwards that there might be some, some willingness to relook at it. We drew up another concept plan, floated it out to the water department. We got an indication from C C W that they would support it if it was approved through the health department. That's the environmental services with Andrea Frazier. She required a level three soil analysis of the six acres. She also indicated that, in fact, it would require, and the, the health department would requirement is within five hundred feet of a, of a sewer line, but that there were some, you know, some opportunities if it was economically not feasible. She requested an analysis of that. We got, you know, we, we performed the, spent the money. Well, let me, let me just say this. I came back up to planning and zoning, met with Scott briefly, and floated out what we were doing, and the indications that we had gotten from the department, a couple, he said, give me a couple of days. I did that. There was an, because I, I said at the time, if, 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 if there's a, a snag here, I'm not going to go forward. I don't want to spend time, energy, or money in the soil analysis and so forth. I got a, I got a clear slate, an indication to go ahead. At that point, I performed the soil analysis, presented my information to the health department, along with a financial analysis, cost analysis of the cost of the sewer line to get it to the property for the lots versus the average cost of the septic tank. It was substantial, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get sewer to the property, and, and, and on average, roughly about thirty-five thousand, thirty-seven thousand to all the septic tanks that were required by the soil analysis. I made those applications, and, and here we are. Again, it is in keeping with the, with the twenty thirty-five plan. It also keeping, is in keeping with lowering density. It fits the overall area within, within the flowing wells corridor. I, I realize, and I deal with some of this, not nearly as much as some of the larger developers, but I do realize that these maps show some of these tributaries and so forth. And so I went back over there and, and reviewed that property, you know, as best I could from the street, Forest Drive, where that, that tributary of Reed Creek is supposed to be, and it's the guy's yard. There's no creek there. I mean, there certainly may be some water flow in terms of how it flows elevation-wise from Forest Creek toward, toward property forty-one fifty on Day Road, but there's really no creek. I would, my last point would be that I would point out that there is an existing septic system at, at Day Road at forty-one thirty-six, and, and I may be wrong about this, but I believe if someone had purchased the separate lot on Summer Place, there's no way to get sewer there. I, I'm assuming there would be some hardship case that were developed if someone bought that two acres to be able to install a sewer, a septic tank. So in the scope of things, we are really discussing an additional three septic systems versus what, you know, what, what could currently go. I think, thank you for your time.
Have I got any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone here that would like to speak against this issue? One of you coming forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Wise. I live at two six nine fourths drive, right around the corner from this property that we're talking about. So when I saw the signs go up on Day Road about this meeting, I went and did a little research just so I can come prepared to this meeting. One of the first things I did, I looked back through ten years of planning commission notes, meeting notes for the past ten years, to see if there was a precedent sent by this commission going from R two, R one. Find a single record in ten years that showed that. Saw plenty of going from R one to R two, hence because during development, that's what people want to do. They want to take a, a lot and they want to build additional properties on it. And so I had asked myself, why are we going from R two to R one? Second thing I looked at was the zoning that was put up on the map earlier. Nowhere around this property are you going to see an R one property. Closest R one property to this, about a mile and a half as the crow flies. Okay, so there's nothing zoned around here. When you look at the definition of R one, R two on the county page, describes for an R one, low-density suburban development, properties that have access to public water, but may not have access to public sewer. This property does have access to public sewer, about a hundred and seventy-five feet from the sewer point we talked about to the edge of the property.
May I interrupt you right there just a second?
Sir.
You do realize that you're taking a chance on, if this property is not zoned, the developer can do it and put those eleven to thirteen lots without us saying a word, because we wouldn't have any say in it.
Yes, sir. I mean, right now.
But you know, you're taking that chance?
Yes, sir, and.
Okay. You're okay with that?
Well, you know, what would I like, I mean, am I okay with that? You know, my personal opinion really doesn't matter. What matters here are the facts. Now, I've, I've come to a lot of commission meetings in the past. A lot of people will come up here and mention, I don't want to see the trees go. I want to see the animals go. I don't want to see the quietness go. That, that's immaterial. I mean, right now, the property is zoned R two, and that could be developed tomorrow, and we would have no, if that was the proposal, we wouldn't even be.
I just want to make sure you understood, you understood that.
Yes, sir.
Because he could come back and do that.
Oh, yes, sir. And, and, you know, so, you know, will it be developed one day? Possibly. I mean, we like the idea of one acre lots versus, you know, you know, five houses versus twelve houses, but when you sit down and look at it, the developer kind of said, he said, if I can't get sewer, it's not worth my money to build on this property. And that's nothing against the developer. I mean, you know, he's not here to break even. He's here to make money like any other business. So when you look at the property, I mean, it's a unique property. If it was, you know, half a mile long and only two hundred yards wide, you could build a bunch of houses on here, but it's a unique property where unless you pulled a cul-de-sac through the middle of that property, or develop houses along the outer perimeter of the property, that's why you can only get about twelve houses. You know, so we, we understand that, and there, you know, I've talked to a number of neighbors about that, and it's kind of a catch twenty-two. Now, if it's going to be developed one day, yeah, we'd like to see larger lots with fewer houses, but right now, you know, the, the danger, and this is the danger that could be set before the county, so going back ten years of records, no one has gone from R two to R one. So in the future, since I live right around, right around the corner from this property, I own two properties. I have the house, property that my house is on, and I have a house that, have a vacant lot. So if this is approved, the justification is for, you know, financial issues, you know, if I come back six months later and say, hey, I'd like to take my R two property and zone it to R one and put a septic on it, the board has kind of set a precedent.
It's not our responsibility to dictate profits to developers or you that come here in front of this board.
Sure.
It is to make an intelligent decision on the facts that we have.
Correct.
I want to make that perfectly clear.
Correct.
So it's not setting any kind of precedent.
Okay. But, you know, and, and I own one of the smaller properties. There are much, you know, there are neighbors around me to my left and my right that own much larger properties. So if this, if this passes from this board, then they can come forward one day and say, hey, I'd like to, you know, develop four houses on my property, and I like to do it with septic because that's what happened in the future, as long as there's not an issue with soil or environment or that. And that's, I mean, you know, are five houses going to block up the roads with traffic? No. Are they going to tax our schools? No. Are they going to be a burden on our emergency services? No. You know, so you can't argue that. We can't argue about trees and birds and quietness. We can't argue about that. All we're looking at right now is, we're asking to put this, build this property with septic, because it'll save the developer a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And that, that's not my quote, that's the developer's, who obviously has looked at this very, very hard. Done a number of different analyses, and he's come up with these numbers. And that's really the bottom line, gentlemen. So we're requesting that this approval not be, or this request not be...
Thank you for coming forward.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else like to speak on, come, Mr. Norris?
My name is Tommy Norris at 321 Summer Place, and I just would like to ask maybe a couple of questions. Mr. Lewis, is your intention if zoning changed to R1, that you would abandon the project?
Mr. Norris, let's move forward. Next question.
Okay. So the answer to that question is you're not... The other question was, oh, but I just wonder if any other developer would say, hey, it's not economically feasible. That was my other, I wonder. It's not really a question, I just...
Then the world knows. Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Any questions from here? Like a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove, file RZ 23-11-0. Zoning from R2 to R1 to permit, on septic tanks for tax map, 078B, parcel 055 and 056.
Second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Not opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the meeting for tonight. We voted not to rezone. In other words, it's going to be just like it was when you walked in the door.
So that, that's a recommendation to the board.
To the board of commissioners.
Right. So they'll have the final decision making on that on November 21st?
Yes, that's correct.
November 21st, board will take that up.
Thank you all for coming. Make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second? This meeting stands...